And/or parties with the right and/or requirements to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website at www.northandoverma.gov. For this meeting, in-person attendance of members of the public and board members will be permitted. Members of the public who wish to watch the meeting live may do so on their television by turning to Comcast Channel 8, Verizon Channel 26, or online at www.northandovercam.org. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the North Andover website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of the proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. If the public would like to participate in the public hearings but not attend the meeting in person, please email your questions, comments prior to or during the meeting to J. Battersby. That is J.B.A.T.T.E.R.S.B.Y. at northandoverma.gov. The questions and comments will be read during the proceedings and responded to accordingly. Now we will all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands unafraid, under God, and with its justiciable justice.
We're going to go right in order, so the first public hearing is a new public hearing for 23 Cleveland Street. Mr. Clerk?
The petition of Dawn Vargas for property at 23 Cleveland Street, map 29, parcel 27, North Andover, Mass. Home 1-845, in the A4 zoning district. The applicant is requesting a various pursuit at the town and North Andover zoning bylaws. Section 195-7.3 yards setbacks. For one side setback in the A4 zoning district for the purpose of extending an existing deck on the property specifically, applicant has requested a side setback needing a relief variance of 14.09 feet. Side setback proposed is 5.91 feet. Side setback required is 20 feet.
If the applicant can come forward?
Hi.
Hi. You can sit at the table or the podium. If you can just state your name.
Dawn Vargas.
Okay. And if you can tell us a little bit about the project?
Sure. I bought 23 Cleveland Street in April of last year and moved in in June. And when I saw the property, I fell in love with it as well as the neighborhood. There's a small deck that's currently on the property on the same part where the work's being proposed. And after talking with Mr. Hutchins and realizing that there had not previously been a permit for that deck, I wanted to extend the deck, and that's how this process got started. So my goal is to hopefully have some approval for extending that deck. It's pretty small. It doesn't accommodate my own immediate family, among many others. So that was the project.
Questions from the board?
So I think I have a general idea, but I don't see the exact dimension here. What's the current setback of the -- what's the setback of the current deck from the property's edge?
You mean how far is the current deck?
Yeah.
I don't remember off the top of my head. It has to be in here somewhere, I'm sure. But it's already out of compliance. Basically, there should be no deck golf, is what I --
Right. Well, the -- yeah, the building structure itself is 16 feet from the edge of the property, which is already past the 20 feet. So I'm sure you -- the original builder received a --
I want to say it's six feet off of that.
Okay, six feet off of that.
My question to you is this. I drove by there. Is the only thing that's stopping you going all the way to the street is the tree that's in the way?
No, I think that deck would be pretty massive. I'm not trying to --
I mean, I did get a tape out, but it looks like the tree is as far out as you could go.
No, because the end -- the edge of the deck where it would currently be in, if you drove by, you already saw where the contractor put in the four pieces of wood to mock off where the edge of the deck would be. So it's pretty -- it's a good five feet away from the edge of the tree. My goal is definitely not to extend.
Okay, so those pieces of wood that were in the ground, those triangular pieces of wood, that is what, the perimeter of the deck?
Correct. That's as far out as the deck is planned to go, which is still a good, at least, five feet from where that tree is.
I was a bit puzzled by the -- there's like a landscape plan here that has a pool and a paper patio. I'm assuming that the deck is supposed to go where the paper patio is supposed -- is on this plan?
No, so the pool was one of my original conversations as well with Mr. Hutchins, and I decided to put that on hold until we could situate the deck that's on the side.
I just mean like in this paper patio is where the deck would be going?
Correct.
Is everything in like the landscaping around that going to be the same?
The landscaping is planned to go in after the deck would be put in.
But the proposed deck is not, like, as I'm handling this right?
No.
Is it Ms. Vargas, Mrs. Vargas?
Ms. Vargas.
Ms. Vargas. Paul, if you're watching me, if you're listening out there in Neverland, Paul, okay? A former member of the zoning board always had a thing with people asking for double-digits relief. And that's what you're asking, for double-digit reliefs with 14 feet right here. Me personally, and I can't speak for the rest of the board, I have no problem with two or three feet, four feet, but we're getting into double-digit relief, which is less than what's going to end up with. That I have a problem with. And I understand what you're trying to do.
Do you have a suggestion for?
Cut it back a little bit so we don't need such a large -- 14 feet for me. Paul, you hearing me out there? Okay, 14 feet is just hard for me to swallow.
And less than six feet from the road ultimately when it's done. And less than six feet from the road ultimately when it's done.
Yeah. It's a -- I mean, that's my opinion. Maybe the board members have something more they want to add, something more they want to not add.
I guess as far -- if you're concerned about the double-digit factor of it, I think if she goes less than double-digit, then she's not going to have much of a deck left.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
It may have, but if you want to put a table and --
We have a sitting area and a large table, and I understand wanting a big deck. Trust me, I just dealt with the deck two years ago, and it's enough for me to be able to fit a table and a grill for my family, nothing else. So I understand that want, but I have to agree, going into double digits, it really pushes the limit a lot, even for me. I prefer half or under is where I'm at.
Okay, so half would bring us to seven for a deck that's already existing there at six feet off. So the total dimension would be 13 from the dwelling.
I think you mean half of the 20.
One day, yeah.
Okay, so 17 total from the dwelling.
Well, if the required is 20 feet, then what I'm saying is, is, yeah, is half of it.
So 10 feet from the top.
10 feet.
I'm totally open to the idea of, you know, cutting the size. I'm not -- the proposal was based on not having any baseline to go with of what is acceptable to the board here. So that was my understanding of what part of this discussion would be tonight. But I guess I'm not clear on how we decide what the maximum would be.
I think ultimately what will happen is you'll end up getting a feel for each board member on where they stand. So you can hear from Alan where, when he's -- someone's asking for double digits, he's uncomfortable with that. Now, that's not to say that if you came back with 10, he wouldn't give you 10 even though it's double digits. I'm sitting here saying, I also -- double digits makes me uncomfortable. So you might hear from other board members, that might give you the impression of, okay, you'll go back with whoever did your designing, see how you can scrunch it back. And obviously, we all understand you want a deck you can use, and having a sitting area and a table, you might not be able to get the full-size sitting area and the table you want. So you might have to give up something, and then you would come back next month. That's an option you have. So it depends on other board -- if other board members want to put their input in on this. But I guess right now, you basically know you have two who aren't going to be comfortable with the double digits.
Do you -- do you know how high the existing deck is off the ground? Three steps, four steps?
So, no, the existing deck, if you don't mind. It's these three steps here, brings up to a small landing, and then these are the three steps up to the deck. So on the left-hand side of the diagram with the landscaping, there's three steps that bring you to a concrete landing, and then there's three additional steps that bring you up to the deck. It's actually the only way to get into the house from the back.
But the first three steps, that's basically you've got a hill in front of your house, correct? I mean, those first one, the first three are raising you from street level to, I'll say, your yard. And then, now that you're on the yard, then it's three steps up to the deck.
Yes, to the back door of the house, yeah.
So I think I differ a little bit from my colleagues in how I view this. I think if it was, you were building an extension upon your house, and that extension, the wall of the house came to the edge of your, you know, came within five feet of the edge of the property, I would be totally with them that that is a lot to ask of us. I think when it is a deck, the deck is lower, it's not visually obtrusive to anybody. Yeah, rules are certainly rules, but we are here to think about flexibility in those rules. That's the entire purpose of this board existing. And so I am -- now, you need four votes, so you have to -- you'd have to convince one of them to come around to my point of view. But I'm more willing to be a little bit lenient. That said, I think, you know, if you have members that are concerned, you can see how -- see where you can find a middle ground in there, and that can sometimes be helpful. But I'm definitely more willing to give a little bit of ground towards it. I don't know, I have to think about how I feel about it, but I don't know if this far, if all the way up to six feet is where I am, but I'd be willing to give a little bit more than the 10 feet.
Thank you, Mr. -- is it this?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, sorry, Steve. Go ahead. If I'm looking at this right, it looks like from the face of the house where the deck is at, you've got 21 feet to the property line. I think it's 16 feet for the deck, plus five feet from the deck to the property line. So if you were going to keep that at the relief at 10 feet, that would leave you 11 feet for the deck. I guess I have a difference of opinion, but I see why you'd want more than that, because 11 feet is kind of a narrow dimension to fit a table, chairs, and have some circulation around it. So I'm sort of with Mike. I think this location, you're on a corner, you're not up against another property line. It's not the wall of a building, it's an open deck. So I'd be for, okay, with it going some distance beyond there.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I do just want to clarify just that I'm not exactly on a corner, so where the deck would be would just be on the corner of my driveway. I'm not the corner property on Cleveland, if that makes any sense.
Is that Saunders Street is not a --
I'm the corner property in the front, but in the back where the deck would be is actually on Saunders.
But you're on a corner.
You're on a corner of two streets.
Right.
The building is.
Yep, the front of my home is on the corner.
Yeah, this side is not.
Right.
Front of my home is on the corner.
Right, right.
But where the deck goes is not.
The deck is not in the corner, but because your home is on a corner, you've got sort of frontage on two streets, which is a limitation. So that's why I'd be okay with it.
And I'm just curious, as part of the process, is there any -- I'm sorry?
I'm sorry.
I was asking if he was okay with the 14.
Yeah.
I think he was saying he wouldn't be okay with it if it were like five feet from the edge of a property where there were people.
Right.
But because it's just a sidewalk, you're fine.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Is part of the process as well, there are some neighbors here, my abutters on my immediate left, and my other abutters on Saunders Street are here as well, so is part of the process listening?
It was unless you have anything to add, they're more than welcome to step up and say whatever it is they'd like to say. We do have quite a few other hearings going on later today, so if we can not repeat, I appreciate that. I know some of us want to get out of here earlier.
Well, I don't want to put them on the spot either, and if we don't have time, but I mean, they're here, so I just didn't know what the process would be.
If anybody would like to come up and speak in support or against, they're more than welcome to.
Can I ask a quick question before you sit down and yield? Is the ultimate plan in the future to put it up? I guess I'm wondering why the deck can't go in the backyard where the pool would have been?
Because there's no back door there. The -- it's a second -- that basically comes up to the main floor of the building, which is the kitchen.
It wouldn't be directly attached to the building, but there could be a commuter space there.
But then I'd have to actually make a -- I'd have to break through the structure in the back to make some type of way to get out to the deck. So that's actually more.
Well, you just could have -- you just could walk around, like, to the driveway.
Oh, I -- yeah, I guess, yeah. I mean, the deck was already there when I bought the property, so I was just kind of going based off of the deck.
Right. I'm just trying to think of like other, because you asked like what was the alternative, and so I'm thinking like, if you wanted to create outdoor space.
Yeah.
You know, that's the best way to make it directly attached to the house, but it doesn't necessarily have to be.
But with that said, what you're not, I think is reflected there is the fence between my property on 23 and my neighbor's property at 21. So there's a fence that divides that section, so you wouldn't be able to put the deck over the fence.
Sure, I mean --
The fence is six feet high.
The fence is at the edge of the building, right? Or is it right at the end of the driveway?
No, the fence is not at the edge of the driveway. The fence is dividing the building basically down the middle, in the back.
Right, so there is space between the end of the driveway and the fence. There's not?
There is, but I guess the -- yeah, it wouldn't -- I don't know. I can't really visualize it.
All right.
Can I ask a question, Paul? The existing deck, is there an issue with leaving that? Does she grandfather it in, or does she have to -- she grandfathered it? Okay. I guess my only thought might be, if you get a feel that you may not get what you're looking for tonight, is have you thought about a patio, like, on the ground, where you won't need -- there's no setbacks.
So you actually are looking at what was considered originally was the patio after discussing this multiple times.
Oh, this is a patio.
The issue became with the patio is that the tree that you see is rotting, and none of the landscapers that came out to do the patio were convinced that the roots wouldn't impact the overall stability and the layout of the patio. So to be honest, the patio person directly said he would recommend the deck, which is so. Originally, I started with the idea of a patio and then moved to a deck.
As an armory, I can say it might kill the tree to install a patio directly up against it like that, so that's not wrong.
Okay.
Who owns the tree, the town or you?
I do.
So you could cut that tree down?
Theoretically, yeah.
If anybody wants to come up? So we just need you to say your name and address, please.
Jean Willoughby, 224 Raleigh Tavern Lane, North Andover. I'm just sitting here, just curious as to why. Can you explain the double digits for me? Because it just seems like you're talking to someone that I don't know who you're talking to in TV land, and then --
He is.
And so I'm just curious, what is your rationale with the double digits?
So explain double.
I'll be more than happy to explain that. The former chairman of the zoning board, his name is Paul?
Koch.
Koch, okay? And through many, many years of deliberations and people applying for things, and trying to be fair and unfair and never doing our job right, and maybe sometimes doing our job correctly, you try to set a guideline, you try to set a standard as to what you don't want to go over, as far as being lenient. And Paul kind of established he can never swallow double-digit relief. Okay, that double-digit relief was always the applicant pushing the envelope. Okay, really pushing the envelope.
Needs more than 10 feet.
Okay.
So if you're looking for five feet of variance versus 15 feet of variance, you're more likely to get five versus the 15 where it's double digits.
So the current situation, it requires 20, what is it, 20 feet setback. And what she's asking for is a variance of 14, which means she's asking for more than half of what is actually allowed and required. And for some of us, not all of us, that much of a relief is just, it's hard to swallow. Because at the end of the day, the setback is what the setback is. And when people are coming to us, they're asking for us to kind of bend that line, and all of us kind of already set a standard of, we're not going to bend any further than this. And for some of us, it's double digits. So she came in looking for, you know, 9.8 feet of variance. It's not double digits. It's very close, but it's not double digits. And that's also to say if she came in looking for 10.3, it's over double digits, but it's not that much, where she's asking for so much. And I'm not saying that, you know, basically what I'm saying to her is, go back and work it, and see if there is a way. Because when people first come and they don't know the situation of the zoning board, they basically come in with what it is they want, essentially, what they want, what they can afford, and what they can fit on their land. So they don't really think about where people are going to stand in the board in the terms of 14-feet variances too much. So what I ask is, go back and make an effort. So sit down and see what you can live with and what you can't live with. And she may come back and say, I can't, there's no point financially and for my family to do, you know, to ask for less than 10.2. And some of us may sit here and say, okay, she went back, she tried, 10.2 is the best she can do. She may come back and say, I was able to get it to 9.9, and she might get what she wants. And as you hear, you have two board members who, the 14 doesn't bother them, because it's on a sidewalk, it's on a street, it's not next to it.
Right.
Others, for me, it's regardless of what -- I have to set my own standard, because I'm being asked to bend a rule that's set. So I have to set my standard. The half is basically playing.
Should we go up to the podium, please?
The chair's fine.
No.
So I just want to clarify, I have been working on this basically since I moved into the house on June 23. And I have tried to work with the town many, many times, and not to say that I didn't, but the patio was originally thought about, it was discussed. So my hope for tonight is, and like, I'm not opposed to having less, I just had no baseline to know what I could ask, and I thought that coming out of this meeting, that was part of the goal, as opposed to now coming back and saying, what can you live with? I mean, can we just decide on what the number is? And so I thought that was the outcome of tonight, not to have to go back and kind of renegotiate or rethink about it again, redraw up plans. If it's, if 10 is the number, then I'm not disappointed with 10. I just had no baseline to go with to begin with, to draw out the plan.
And I'm not going to, I'm not personally going to sit here and say to you, 10.2 is it. That's my number. I don't think Alan's going to.
I am not going to commit to any arithmetic number. That's up to you to come up with, with your wisdom.
So if I say 10, can we have the vote now? Because I mean, I don't understand.
No, the problem is that new plans would have to be drawn up, because when we approve this, we have to be able to make reference. And as much as I wouldn't like it, if we were to approve this plan tonight, I don't like that there's the pool here that's not actually really already there.
So you guys keep referring to that plan, and I'm a little interested as to why, because the actual framing plan from the contractor who put those four wood plans in actually looks like this.
Well, because this was put in the package.
It was put in the package as a representation, one of the patio work that was --
But it's not a representation of how it is in reference to the property.
It's a representation of what the landscaping was going to look like around the deck, replacing that patio with this deck and that landscaping. So there was no way to get the architectural landscaper who drew out that plan and combine her work with this person's deck plan into one document or plan. That wasn't possible, at least to my knowledge of being able to do it. So that's why you vote. But it was to show the work that's been thought about and discussed since June 23 of last year on getting a deck, essentially.
So we couldn't just make it a condition that it's approved not to exceed?
No.
No.
No. No. No, I'm not, I'm not. Ron might go that way, other chairman, I'm not going that way. I want a plan, and I understand this, but a lot of the times, we look at this because this gives us an idea of visually how far back we are, and so on and so forth. So I'm not going to just approve based off of it being less than a certain amount, because we don't do that with any application. So right now, you have two board members who are, seem to be fine. You have --
Well, I'm not, I'm an alternate, so I may not even be voting.
Okay. So who do we have voting tonight?
That's a good question.
Jen, that's on you.
I have to be first.
Oh, so I would be voting, okay.
Well, so we would need, I think we need two alternates voting today, don't we? Three, four? Oh, yeah, Steve, yes, Steve's the fourth now, so yeah, that's right. So it would be us five, yeah.
Yeah, we're a full board. So you have two who are not necessarily uncomfortable as of right now with your 14. You have two who are uncomfortable with your 14, and you have one who is silent. If more members would like to come up and talk more about being in support or against, they can. From there, you have the option of either going back to the drawing board, and we would hear this next month, and that's absolutely your right and your decision, or we can close the meeting tonight, and the board members will discuss and vote, and then that's the end of it.
So to come back for next month, there needs to be an entire new package put together like this one.
So these plans would obviously have to change, because your deck size would change. It sounds as if you're saying this --
I won't submit that.
It sounds like you're saying, well, this --
That's the current.
This is the current of what's there. So that's fine.
It also has the proposed deck on it.
Right. Okay, okay, it's highlighted. Did you see the highlighting?
It has a proposed.
I asked the survey to put that on, but --
Well, that was a smart thing to do.
Clearly not. Clearly not.
So, I mean, I think part of the problem is, the house is already built up within the setback, right? The house itself is at 16 feet, the corner of it. So I can see where there's some hardship on that end of it and the corner. But, I mean, I did drive by, and that tree is right there. I think the deck is pretty close to the sidewalk, as it is drawn now, so.
Yeah, I mean, I'm over five feet, so I could lay down and be in the sidewalk and the --
But to be clear, you would not have to redo your entire application.
No, no.
It would just be, you need to supply us enough information to make a decision. So something like this, with just the new dimension in there, would, in my opinion, and others can tell me, would be sufficient.
And would also be sufficient a new framing, would it just be sufficient to have the new framing plan from the contractor as opposed to having the new deck added to the certified plot plan?
Well, I think the idea is to get the actual dimension that it's going to be, so.
Okay.
Yeah, it just helps us a lot to have the bird's eye view, just to lay out exactly.
You know, I don't think you need the drawing, I don't think you need the framing or the -- this, to me, if you just, if this went back to 14 feet or whatever it is, 12 feet off the house, whenever you decide this distance is going to be, that just have them draw a line and erase this and change that five to 10 or whatever that numbers are going to be.
So no framing plan?
Yeah, you don't have to redo everything.
Well, with the front, the front view is kind of helpful for like how high it would be if it's going to be close to the sidewalk.
But is that going to change?
Her height's not going to change.
That was a question.
Right. If that doesn't change, then I think it's fine.
Okay.
Okay, can I ask a question here?
Absolutely.
The, from the current deck in the house to the sidewalk, am I interpreting that as 16 feet?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And so I did drive and look at your house and at the deck, and so with the 14.3 request, what I thought was unique, differed, was the deck would be literally almost upon the sidewalk. It would almost, if it goes out 14.3, and if it's 16, so if I'm missing something, then please clarify.
The house steps back here.
Yeah, it's not 14.
So 16 from this corner, but the deck is coming off of this face of the house, which is a recessed back.
So you get an extra few feet.
Yeah.
So the edge of the deck would be where you saw the four?
And, okay, then, thank you, all right. So then, I, my only concern was, is the adjacency to the sidewalk. That was my main concern about this, so that's where my head is at on this one. And so the closer to the sidewalk, the more of a concern I have.[1772.73]
I have to ask then, is there a policy around the landscaping? Because in the plan, you see what would be the landscaping around. So the deck, even if it was the 14, which again, I'm not, I don't need that, I didn't know what to start with, but there'd be the landscaping around the deck that separates the edge of the deck from any part of the public walkway.
For me, that's definitely a consideration. That how it's treated on the edge can absolutely mitigate these things. And sometimes we will stipulate that it has to be there, right? So the vanilla version of us approving something would be to say, "Oh, well, we just approve the dimensions of the deck up to this point." But we can also say, "And, you know, you have to place shrubbery around it," or something like that, if we felt that that was necessary. We often do that, not, less in the sidewalk case, but more in the case of somebody, if somebody's building something out towards their neighbor's property and their neighbor wants to make sure that, you know, nobody's gonna be looking from the window of the neighboring house into their house, we could say, "Okay, well, you have to either build a fence or you have to build like trees that go of a certain type, that go up to a certain height to block it out."
Yeah.
This, obviously, it's not that complicated for this, but, but no, that can be, that is potentially a consideration.
Okay.
I mean, I would say having landscaping around the bottom, around the edge of this deck would soften the look of it from the sidewalk. I mean, you might not feel so much like you're walking, you know, five feet from a deck if there's, you know, some nice plants around there. I also think, you know, not going with a paper patio and taking down the tree. And, you know, I think having like a paper patio that comes five feet from the edge of the sidewalk would be more intrusive to me walking down the sidewalk than-
Right.
-a patio, like a deck at the same level with a huge tree between me and it. I mean, I haven't seen the tree, I haven't driven by the house, so I'm assuming it's a regular sized tree tree. I don't know, I'm not voting, but I think it's a kind of a toss-up for me.
So what would you like to do? Do you want us to continue until next month, or would you like us to close the meeting?
I'd like to continue until next month.
Before we do, was there anybody else who wanted to speak up?
Thank you.
Good call.
Sorry, I didn't mean that.
My name is Julia Grimaldi, I live at 84 Saunders Street, almost directly across the street from Ms. Vargas. And I have a comment and a question, so my comment would first be that I'm in support of Ms. Vargas extending her deck at the proposed site that has already been marked off, so you can all drive by and kind of see what that looks like. But my question is, how often, if ever, or when was the last time that your zoning requirements have been reviewed and assessed and maybe changed to look at newer properties or older properties? And sort of like, where are we, circa what year that this was determined, this sort of distance?
You're currently the oldest one on the board, but I mean, you've been on the board the longest. You would have best knowledge of us, because I can't answer that.
Mr. Building Inspector, I need some assistance to answer this.
I can't see when the original one, they're always updated at every town meeting. You can add, you can add or take off, it goes through a town meeting vote. Setbacks on her particular one, because she is on a corner, it's five feet more than a regular house would be because it is a corner. A corner lot requires 20 feet, a regular one requires an R4, 15 feet. So that was put in there because it is a corner for a clear view and everything else coming down there. So that's kind of the idea of it.
So this will come up for consideration from residents at the next town meeting in terms of-
If you would like to put in an application to change it.
Yeah.
And that would change for all of the district, not just for this town?
Well, you could change it however you want, right?
You could do it, you could do it just for this neighborhood, you could do it just for this lot, but, you know-
But, so, a few things. So one is that the zoning laws as a policy have been around North Andover for, I think, about 50 or 60 years, as something that's been pretty much established everywhere. They can be changed, they are not by default changed. So we don't, it is not part of our normal agenda to say, "Okay, we're gonna reconsider all of our zoning laws." So you, as Mr. Hutchins said, you can put in, you can ask for an amendment to the town bylaws, you have to get 100 signatures, and then it requires 2/3 of town meeting to affirm it. Zoning laws are quite difficult to change. There, for some specific forms of zoning laws, that requirement was recently reduced to 1/2, but for something like this, it would be 2/3. And so the reality is, is that a lot of these laws, like this one, have been around in their form for a very long time. And so they are 30 years old in many cases. They were designed for what this town was 30 years ago. And so I am sympathetic to that consideration as well.
I think it's important for everyone to understand that, that these are potentially outdated zoning laws that are putting due diligence on residents in newer homes. And I'm just curious, because I do understand that these laws can be changed as I'm paying attention to the economic development zoning laws that are about to be reconsidered for change, so I know it is possible, so thank you so much.
To answer your question, and this is a semi-educated guess, the last zoning bylaw change were in the 70s.
Yeah, okay, and we are at 2022. Thank you so much.
Well, okay, the last town meeting, we had zoning changes. We never want to put in it, but we never change the whole book. We're gonna go per, you know, and-
But where we set what R4 was, and probably setting this neighborhood as R4, he's probably right. That property zoning laws were probably last changed in the 70s.
For that reason, because of being on a side street, it's clear view, we call it.
You're right, every year or two-
House pulling up and stuff like that.
This is really good, but the point of the board here is not to change or update the zoning.
We have no authority, no, we have no-
So to answer your question, yes, they are more than 50 years old, approximately, right?
Anyone else?
Hi, Christine Ronker, 21 Cleveland Street, I'm actually connected to Dawn. I'm kind of confused, I don't want to rehash the whole double-digit thing, but if we're hanging our hat on double-digit just because it's a double-digit, I don't feel like that's fair to her or that it makes sense. I'm just stating my opinion.
No, no, so just understand, the zoning bylaws is 20 feet. And I'm not trying to, don't take this as me trying to be a jerk in saying this. We could very easily, if you want to follow the law and what the zoning policy is, it's your deck is what your deck is, or you have 20 feet, end of story. So when people come to the board, they're asking for us to give them something that's not what the zoning laws say.
They want us to bend the laws.
Right, because they want us to bend, and everybody has, this is what I'm saying, everybody has a comfortability. There are certain things, you're gonna see if you stick around with family suites. Those are fun, okay? Those are fun. Everybody has a limit.
Right, but the board was created because one size doesn't fit all.
And if I'm going to give-
This house is different from every other house in North Andover.
Exactly, why, which is why-
That's why the board was created, to hear people out when it doesn't make sense.
And she may come back next month and say, "The best I could get is 10.2," and I'm gonna sit here and go, "Great," versus there might be an application later tonight where they're looking for nine, and I'm saying, "No," because you don't really need that nine, and this is why you don't need that nine. I understand her predicament, I understand her situation. But we're bending, and the thing becomes is how comfortable are we willing to bend? And I say half because, again, there may be a situation for somebody who's in a worse position than hers where they have to have 11, or they have to have 12. I'm looking at her plan and I'm going, "I'd love to be able to fit a seating area on my deck, and I'd love to fit a table on my deck." I couldn't do that, and I'm not, so I ask, "Can you shrink it a little?" Because at the end of the day, it ultimately becomes, it's either the deck she has now or 20 feet. And at 20 feet, my understanding is there is no deck. You're basically stepping out on a landing and walking down a set of stairs.
So I think where I'm confused is, she said she's willing to go less-
Right.
-but we can't determine that tonight. She now has to do new plans.
Because-
She's invested a lot of time and money, and I feel like had she known, "Hey, 14 is a double-digit and it's never going to get accepted, why don't you come with nine?" Then she would have been better prepared to have this over with today, almost a year-long process.
And unfortunately, it hasn't been a year-long process in front of us. This is her first meeting. So I understand what she has gone through, and I can understand and appreciate her frustration. I can tell you that I don't think there would be any chair, whether it be me or someone else, that would just go, "Basically, all of this paperwork is useless, so the only thing we're going to actually have paperwork for this application is the one legal notice." I think you're going to get any chair saying, "You're gonna have to come back with plans that are different if they're not going to agree to the 14 that she's asking for." So if I'm not going, and she has every right, she can, tonight, she can ask the board to close the meeting. We can close it and we can vote.
And then what happens?
If she doesn't get her variance, the next step is appealing it to the court, right?
So now she can't come back next month?
Or waiting two years.
Yeah.
This is her decision, this is her decision, she makes the decision. And again, I sat here and said, "I'm not comfortable with double digits." I've also said multiple times, that doesn't mean that if she doesn't come back here and say, "I went back to the drawing board a million times, this is the best I can get," that I'm not gonna give her what she's asking for. But I also don't know the effort, because this is the first time she's coming here. So I understand this has been a year-long process for her, this has been a 40-minute process for me. Add 20 minutes since I had to review everything and drive by. So this hasn't been the process for us that it's been for her. So I understand her appreciation, her frustration, I do. But I'm not comfortable with the 14. So her choices tonight are, close the meeting, take a chance with your vote. If you get the variance, you go on your merry way and you build your deck. If you don't get the variance, you're waiting two years, or you're hiring a lawyer and you're going to Superior Court. Or she continues the meeting until next month, she tries to rework the plans the best she can, and she comes back next month.
Last question, I know you have other people. For those of you who drove by, did you get out and walk around the area at all?
I did.
And get a feel for where her deck is gonna be in conjunction with the sidewalk? And what it would be like if you were pedestrian and whatnot?
Yes, that's why if the tree was on her property or the town's property. And I saw the triangular pieces that were in the ground, I'm gonna mark that up, I did. Okay?
Okay.
Yeah, and let me answer, let me say one more thing to you, okay? She's asking for at least variance of 14 feet. Okay, forget they're all nine, okay? I'm in the real estate business, the young man to my left over here is in the real estate business. If we were to grant variances of 14 feet to every builder, to everybody wanting apartments, everybody wanting to put extensions on, there would be a line out this door.
I'm gonna go with this isn't everybody, every situation is unique. You can say that that's a generalization that doesn't really matter.
Yeah, but, yeah, but once we open the floodgates, the 14 feet, once we open the floodgates, the double digits, it opens up a whole new ballgame.
So you take that as a precedent?
Maybe not their opinion.
No, I think, again, we all-
Okay, that's my opinion, not this.
We all have a limit, and you're gonna find some people, some of our board members, in this situation because it's a street, it doesn't bother them. For me, I don't care. It doesn't matter to me whether it's a street or a neighbor. I mean, I'd probably be more strict if you did have a house right next to you. That's just where, that's where I stand. This board, by the way, is volunteered, and there are positions that open up all the time. So it's a volunteer position, I happily put in an application and be on the board because half the time, that's how you get things to change if you don't like them. If you don't like how the zoning is written, we have a town meeting every time in May. I have no idea when you have to have, you know, if you're-
Because I talked to one of the subrare guys.
Okay, so if you want to change the zoning bylaws, I welcome it. But currently, we are at, this is what we are faced with, we are faced with a 20-foot setback. And that's just where we're at today. If she wants to try and change the zoning and wait until next year to see if she can get the zoning to change down to 10 feet, I welcome it, I truly do. It's the only way things change if you don't like them.
Thank you.
I do just have one more quick question, very quick question, which is, are there any concerns about not seeing pedestrians while you're pulling out of the driveway that's right next to this deck?
I'm gonna sit here and say, I'm assuming the driveway has been-
What was the question, I'm sorry?
So the driveway is right next to the deck, the deck is five feet from the sidewalk. The hood of a car is just under five feet. You know, if you're pulling out of the driveway, and that's assuming you're not backing out, even if you're pulling forward, even if you backed in every time, which I don't know that most people do, even if you're pulling forward out of the driveway, if there's someone walking past your deck, you might not see them.
So the deck is actually, there's a retaining wall that would stay there that makes the driveway, that's the end. So the deck is not actually right up against, it wouldn't be right up against the driveway, it'd be inside, I don't know, six feet within the retaining wall that's already there.
So the retaining wall is bigger, is it?
It doesn't look six feet here, it looks like maybe two feet on this drive.
The retaining wall is bigger than six feet?
No, I'm saying from the, so like, here's the pavement, right, that's your driveway. Here's the edge of the deck, the proposed edge of the deck, that looks like maybe two feet.
No, so this is the retaining wall. The dogged line is the retaining wall. This is, so this part, this black bold line is where the current deck is.
I understand, but what I'm saying is like these two things, the retaining wall and the deck, look like they're maybe two feet apart.
But the retaining wall slopes, so the retaining wall down here is sidewalk level. I mean, the last stone is at the level of the sidewalk. It's not completely six feet from the sidewalk.
No, I understand, what I'm saying is that like the driveway itself from your deck, in terms of side to side, looks like it's maybe two feet, so you're parked right next to the deck.
I'm parked right next to the retaining wall.
Which is right next to the deck, like, it looks like it's, like, again, maybe two feet.
On a higher landing, the three steps up, yes.
Right, I think that makes visual obstruction worse to be higher, and I'm not sure that makes it better. What I'm saying is like, if you're pulling out of this driveway, which is two feet, the edge of the driveway, the retaining wall is two feet from the deck, it's like a, you don't-
Well, the solution would be to not put the landscaping in.
I mean, what I'm saying is with zero landscaping, I don't think you could see a pedestrian walking on the sidewalk coming out of the driveway, until they were like at the edge of the deck.
If she cuts it back, if she comes back and cuts it back, I don't think that'll be-
Well, I'm, right, I'm just saying, like, I don't think it's just the double-digit, like carte blanche rule or comfortability that's the issue, I think there's multiple issues. So that was one thing I just noticed while we were talking. I think it's worth thinking about, is like how hard it would be to get out of that driveway without it being a safety hazard with this current plan, and maybe thinking, figuring that into changes that you might make. It's just a suggestion.
Ms. Vargas, what would you like to do?
I'll come back, get another plan.
Can you come up to the microphone?
I'll come back next month.
Okay.
Thank you.
Jen, what's the date for next month?
November 15.
Thank you, so November?
When do I need to have my, November 4?
If you want, we can continue.
Can I postpone it to the, whatever the next meeting is?
The December meeting, yes.
December 13.
So I need a vote?
She wants to continue to December 13?
Do we need a waiver for that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I move that we continue to December 13th.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
So Ms. Vargas is continuing?
I'm sorry, I'm thinking this through, November 4 is when the paperwork is due, the meeting's the 13.
If you want to do November, yes.
If you do December, then you have a bit more time.
Okay, yeah, December.
That's what we just voted about.
Yeah.
Yep. I don't-
Second, I second.
From Michael and from-
No, I was the original motion.
I second it.
And you'll just have to sign a waiver, Jennifer will take care of that with you. Do you do it right now?
I'll do it. Okay.
Thank you, have a good night.
I will say that usually we are getting excoriated by neighbors for being too lenient, so this was an interesting breath of fresh air.
Next up is, what are we, Campion Road, 96 Campion Road? The applicant or whoever is representing can come up. Mr. Clark will read the legal notice.
I am, I just went to house cleaning here, that's all.
Who's gonna vote on this one?
All right, we all said hit, the new public hearing of 96 Campion Road?
Yes.
The petitioner of Christopher Hebert, am I saying that correctly?
I, Hebert, yep.
Hebert for property at 96 Campion Road, map 62, parcel 84, North Andover, Mass. 11845, the R1 zoning district. The applicant is requesting a special permit pursuant to town and North Andover zoning bylaws, section 195-4.2Q, family suite in the R1 zoning district for the purpose of building a family suite within the existing home. Specifically, applicant is requesting a family suite with a gross floor area of 1,010 square feet, existing GFA is 6,042 square feet. Allowed GFA is 1,200 square feet or 2,500, whichever is less.
25%.
25%, what I say.
2,500.
25, well, I meant 25%.
And if you can just state your-
Could I just ask Jen a question? Jen, I didn't vote, we didn't vote on the last one, so do I still vote on this one? Is it just for sure, do I?
Because it was-
People vote for a continuation.
The continuance was just unanimous vote, because there wasn't actual, like, voting on allowing it or not allowing it. Because there wasn't actual like, voting on allowing it or not allowing it.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we were clear. Thank you.
If you could just state your name and give us a little bit of background on the project?
Sure. Chris Hebert. So I moved to the North Endover about two years ago. Part of our search process was with the ultimate goal of having my mother and stepfather go in with us. I felt like I did a pretty good due diligence. I called Mr. Hutchings before I even moved to find out about the process for the family suite. I called several other towns. So the only ones I was looking in are ones that would allow it. My parents live in Western Mass. I'm a Western Mass kid. I have three young children, and my parents wanted to be around more. And they cannot afford to come out there. So really, the only option for them was to build something on our property, which is why we are looking for a town and a property that met these specific needs. We felt that Campion Road solved that for us. The house is big enough for me, my wife, and my three kids, and would allow us to build the family suite for my mother and stepfather. They are young and healthy now. They will eventually be old and hopefully healthy until they ultimately pass. But they also, when that time comes, we would be the ones that would be taking care of them. I cannot do that remotely from Chicopee. So the whole process here was to eventually get the family suite. Took us a little bit longer to get our plans together and do all that, you know, two years after moving in. But that was the ultimate plan, you know, from the beginning. And it was really just working with an architect, figuring out a design and sort of getting our ducks in a row, lining up financing and things like that, so.
So this is going to be within the existing-
Correct, yes. The, right now, there's a three-car garage with a room above it. What's going to happen is, above the garage is going to be removed, and that is where the in-law will be, is above the current three-car garage that already has a room above it. So exterior will change slightly, but there's already a room and everything above it. It'll just, it expands out the roofline a little bit.
Now, this is, okay, and it's attached to the house?
Correct, yes. The garage is, comes into a mudroom that then leads into, into the house. And obviously, with two more bodies in the house, that's why there's a little bit of an extension in that mudroom area to provide a better landing spot for now seven people coming-
Seven sets of shoes.
Yes.
That's assuming everyone only has one pair of shoes.
Good luck. I have two kids.
If there's never shoes there, they're littered.
My kids generally have about a half a pair of shoes.
Yeah.
So you comply with the maximum size and you're being under 1,200 square feet and you're less than 25% of the gross area?
Correct, yes.
So that's all?
We looked at that from the beginning to make it within those parameters. We do have the plans to have a second bedroom. Because again, their entire social network is in Chicopee. So if someone were to come to visit, everyone thinks North Endover or Boston is, you know, hours away. So they want to have a place for people to be able to sleep when they do come and visit.
When you're 80, it is really far away, I'm sure.
What's that?
If you're 80, I'm sure it is really far away, which I'm assuming most of the-
Well, they're not 80 yet. My mother's only 61.
Don't add age to her.
I was just saying, as somebody who made that commute when I was 25 for a few years, it's a long way, so.
My mother's got used to the commute at this point, but early on, it was worlds away.
I have to say one thing I, and I think I'm reading this right. It says a future stair chair? So are you-
I've already planned the walkway currently to go up into that room is way too narrow for that. So we're blowing out that stairway to make sure that we are able to comply with that later. If they end up in a wheelchair.
I will tell you, I really appreciate that because I do not like second floors for elderly. It's a thorn in my side. Because if the whole purpose is for them to be closer and you be able to take care of them, I don't like them having to go up and downstairs. So I thank you for that. I appreciate that.
It was a concern of mine going into it. So we looked at trying to get, build an elevator shaft to put in later, but it just didn't really work with the plans. So the stair lift and expansion is a hell of a lot cheaper than an elevator.
Your parents have a great son.
Yeah, I'm also putting in money for it, too.
Listen, they took care of you when you were younger.
I know. Hopefully, my three will take care of me.
That's why you have three. You have one thirteen, right?
I got all boys. I think I'm in trouble.
I have two boys, so I'm right there with you. My father is lucky he has me.
Of course.
Of course. Any father would be lucky to have me. Any questions from the board on this?
Yeah, I'd like to say something. Mr. Hebert, if you've watched any of these meetings, you know that I'm always opposed to in-law apartments. My fear is that they become two families.
Yeah.
Okay? In this particular case, I don't see how that could become a two-family house at all. Okay, you're within the existing skyline, the location. I don't see this becoming a two-family house, and I have no problem with this at all.
Can we get that on the record? And starred and bookmarked and-
Shared on TikTok.
Yeah, but I just want to know that there is a thought, okay, but my opposition to these in-law apartments, okay, is I know, okay, because I'm in the real estate business, they become two-family homes.
We all appreciate your-
Okay, but in this particular case, I don't see he's doing it for his parents. It's a legitimate request. Not somebody putting a whole addition on a house with exterior entrances. I applaud you for taking care of your parents.
To put it a lot shorter, you're asking very little of us.
Right. And you're doing it the legal way instead of just doing it.
And that is a big thing coming from him.
It sounds like it.
Right, right, right. You're doing it the legal way instead of just doing it.
I'm not going to jump the gun yet, but I will ask if anyone else has any further questions.
Good.
I'm good with it.
Can we, again, put a star for, I think, just being? I'll get to the public. I'm getting there. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against?
Then we got a few letters from the butters.
We also did get a few letters from the butters that were in support of the project. Elizabeth Christopher was in support of the project. And Mary Fallen was also in support of the project. If I read that right, right? Anyone else? Okay, can we start this for the shortest family suite? Under my watch, I will add.
Is that good or bad?
That is incredible. Take pride in that.
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
So, seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Don't you have to?
Well, we gonna have any deliberations?
Do we have any deliberations?
I'm good. I'm good with it.
Okay.
All right. I would like to make a, I would like to grant, I would like the board to grant a special permit pursuant to the Town and North Endover zoning bylaws, section 195-4.2Q, family suite in the R1 zoning district for the purpose of building a family suite within the existing home. Specifically, applicant has requested a family suite with a gross floor area of GFA of 1,010 square feet. Existing GFA is 6,042 square feet. Allowed GFA is 1,200 square feet or 25%, whichever is less. And I would like to mention plans that were submitted to us drawn by, who was it, LY?
LYF Architects.
Basiets, am I saying it correct?
LYF Architects.
Yeah, LYF Architects. Oh, I see it, yeah, LYF.
See how they did that?
Yeah, I see, yeah, I get it. Dated, all right, it's so damn small and I'm old. What's the date on it?
September 8, 2022.
All right, September 8, 2022. It's not me having trouble reading that, is it?
I can read appropriately fine.
Well, there's many years between us.
Thank God.
Okay, I'd like to reference plans G100, G201, Am I missing S1, S100? S110, A100. How many quarters you got? A110, A201. And that's it.
Can I point out one thing? I don't know if it matters, but you said 6,042 is a square feet. A100 is actually 6,220. They forgot to put in the additional mudroom square footage of 100.
I did what was the-
Yeah, no, I know, because I think when they redid the drawings, they had forgot about that. And they, when they collated these to submit, I had already submitted the-
No, I'm not a legal beagle. Maybe somebody hears this. But I can, we're only allowed to-
Well, no, I don't think it changes anything.
Right, right, right. I think it's-
I just wanted to be- Yes, I have actually more square footage. I just wanted to point that out in case it didn't matter.
I mean, this is what the variance, this is what you're looking for.
Yeah, I think you need to read the way it's written.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think we're good on that, right?
Yep.
Because it's not what we're deciding on, it's the script.
Right, right, right. It's the family suite.
Yep.
All right.
Can I just do?
My second.
Well, it's my motion, so second, right.
Great, okay. So I have to go one by one? I can't just do unanimous? Or I can't just do, okay. Michael?
Yeah.
I'm an aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Your application is great.
Congratulations.
What's the next step?
So the next step is, give us, give me a few days. Give me a few days. I have to read the decision. Give me a few days. You will be provided the decision, I believe, in 20 days?
Uh, so two weeks, you have two weeks to file the decision.
Okay, so we have two weeks to file the decision. And then from there?
Then 20 days.
Appeal.
So anybody can appeal. I doubt that's going to happen in your situation. So two weeks for us to file the decision. 20 days from there, you will get your approval. And then you can deal with him, I believe, any further and build your family suite.
All right.
Does it need to be recorded?
Yeah, but that's-
Yeah, once he gets it, yes, go ahead and stand.
Thank you.
Have a great night. Wow, did we get a time on this?
See, contrary to popular opinion, right how it was, this is always going down.
One of you was like, stick around for family suite.
I got nervous when I heard that.
Sorry. Listen, you should go back and look at some. Okay, up next is 290 Webster Woods Lane.
Let me just clean up this.
I also would like to just take a second while we're going to say hi to our chairman, who is currently at home. But I see he is watching us.
Keep me in, no.
Action you on what?
He's watching on, I believe, the TV, but he's on Google Meet. So I hope I'm doing him proud.
You are doing me very proud, bud.
There we go. Are we all set?
We are all set.
I'd like to start, so what would be the purpose? Open the public hearing for a petition of Jeff Susi for property 290 Webster Woods Lane, maps 106.2B, posse 170, North Endover, Mass. 11845, in the R2 zoning district. The applicant is requesting a special permit pursuant to Town and North- pursuant to Town and North Endover zoning bylaws, section 195-4.2Q, family suite in the R2 zoning district for the purpose of constructing a family suite within the unfinished basement of the existing home.
Awesome. Thank you. Good evening. Hopefully, I can make a new record right after that one. I appreciate it. Yes, I'm Jeff Susi. My wife and I have owned the property now at 290 Webster Woods for approximately a year and a half. So we moved over from 105 about a year and a half ago. When we were searching out the property similar to the last, my mother-in-law is the individual who would be looking to move into the family suites should we get the special permit. She joined us in the process with the hopes that this would be able to occur at some point in the future. She's approaching, obviously, the elder years. And one of the things that we look forward to is having her be part of our family. We have a younger son. We're hoping to grow our family, have her be part of that along the way, but also allow her to have an independent family lifestyle or a single lifestyle, if you will. So we purchased the property. It's approximately 3,900 square feet. Finished in the dwelling right now. The proposed family suite is 585 square feet, so significantly below both thresholds. Within that, there's no exterior changes, no changes to grading, no changes to really anything from an external standpoint within the house. I can keep going. I can pause. But that's a quick summary of it, if you will.
Board members?
What is the ceiling height of the basement?
It's approximately 10 feet. We'd be doing a drop ceiling throughout, but it's approximately 10 feet as it stands. I should say too, my sister-in-law is here. She's the architect on the plans.
That must be nice.
So, excuse me, 8 feet.
So the, it looks like you're renovating the whole basement level, but not the whole basement level as part of the in-law suite.
That's correct. So the family suite will be one-bedroom, kind of a common area that includes the kitchen. And then she'll have her own dedicated bathroom. Otherwise, we're keeping the utility space that currently exists. There's a closet. We're literally just flipping through the other wall and just making it slightly bigger to allow her to have a laundry, a stackable laundry within. And then the only other thing, I know I mentioned the one kid. He's two years old and we're hoping to grow. We figured we'd put a toilet in a powder room so that he doesn't have to keep coming through the house every time he's outside. So yes, we're adding a powder room for ourselves throughout this.
So I guess the point Alan made at the last meeting was it, he saw, he didn't see how that other one could turn into a two-family.
Sure.
But because this is so integrated into the public area of your basement, I can't imagine how another family would be entering through a living part of your house to just go to an apartment.
I appreciate that. That's correct. That's not the intention. There's no dedicated exterior entrance whatsoever, and there's no plans to vote on.
Once again, I'm just going to be redundant. I'm the one who leads the charge against in-law suites. As everybody on this board knows, and he's correct. I don't see how this could ever, ever become a two-family home. Or you would want it to be a two-family home. I see this as you wanted to accommodate some parents. And me personally, I have no problem with it. And I have to thank you for doing it legal instead of just flipping it in there. That's all.
Thank you.
Okay, I have no problem with it. The other problem I'm going to have is reading all these damn maps and numbers here.
Rough life. Any other questions from the board? Anyone from the audience in support or against? Should I close?
I'm making a motion to close the public hearing.
My second.
You get that, Jen? Michael, second. Okay, board?
I think it's a wonderful thing, and I just wanted to go on record as I am not opposed to all in-law apartments.
We now have that on the record, I think we did just set a new record.
I'm ready, that's two tonight.
That's two tonight. Figures. Oh boy, oh boy, said it high.
Setting a precedent.
Any discussion?
I'm good.
I'm.
Okay, so, who's voting? Laura?
Yes.
Okay.
You want me to read it? I think I should.
Yeah, I think you need to make a motion.
I'll, I'll like to make a motion to grant a variance to a Mr. Jeff Susi for property at 290 Webster Woods Lane, map 106B, parcel 170, North End of Mass, 01845, in the R2 zoning district. The applicant, to grant a special permit pursuant to the North End of Zoning Bylaws, section 195-4.2Q, family suite in the R2 zoning district for the purpose of constructing a family suite within the unfinished basement of the existing home. And I'd like to make mention of some plans drawn by Michael A. Littlefield, 50 Omlington Street, Rockland, Mass.
912.
Pardon me?
912.
Oh, 912, oh, 912, I can read this one.
Oh, okay.
Okay, A1, A50. A100, A101, A102. A150, A160, A200. Oh, those two here. A201, A202, A203, A204, A251, A252, A253, and then my friend wraps it up.
Thank you.
Oh, hold on, don't go anywhere yet, we have to take a vote, I know, you're so excited, you wanna get out of the way, you don't want us to change our minds.
I, I second the motion.
Laura?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah?
I am an aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous, you got all that? Okay, you are now all set.
Thank you all.
Have a good night. Okay, up next is 87 Coachman's Lane, we're gonna see if we can keep it rolling.
I think that one might have been even faster.
Listen, what's that?
I think that one was even faster.
I think that one was even faster, he didn't explain as much, that's why.
We didn't make him explain.
Okay.
All right.
I'd like to read the petition of Crossroads Contracting, Nick Kucha for property at 87 Coachman Lane, map 37. A, parcel 25, North End of Mass, 01845, in the R1 zoning district. The applicant is requesting a special permit pursuant to the Town and North End of Zoning Bylaws, section 195-4.2Q, family suite in the R1 zoning district for the purpose of constructing a family suite within the basement of the existing home. Go first.
Could you just give us your name and tell us a little bit about the project?
So, Nick Kucha, Crossroads Contracting, representing the customers tonight. In your package, there is a letter attached from the homeowner. Kim could not be here tonight, but I think she sums up the project best of the, the why. So would you like me to read that, or is it?
If you give me just a second.
It should be in the back of the package, I think it's like second to last page.
Do we have a letter of authorization in here somewhere?
Yep.
Yes, right here.
Just, was what I was looking for, okay, got it, okay.
So very similar to the, the previous applicant, a family suite inside the existing basement for her parents.
How many square feet is this gonna be?
This is gonna be.
1134, correct. And a quarter would be 1594.
And a quarter would be 15.
Yep, they, they actually were very nice and did the math out for us, I love when they do that.
Oh, yes, you're right.
And they broke it down.
And the, I think the, the maximum is 1,200 regardless of the fraction, but it's still under that.
And it's within the footprint of the existing home?
It is, correct.
Once again, I thank you for doing it legal.
What's in the remainder of the basement area?
So it's kind of a funny layout, how it jogs around. So in the center lower portion, where there's double door going into it, is the utility room that has the heating system, hot water and all of that. And then in the center of the house in the back, is actually a section where the ceiling height is too low. So if you're up on the first floor, it's actually a recessed area.
Okay.
Which creates a ceiling space that's too low to be considered habitable finished space. That's why you get that kind of weird U shape going on.
Yeah, okay.
Does this have a door out of the living room?
It has, it's gonna have a window with a window well for egress in case there was a fire.
I was just about to ask you about that.
And each of the bedrooms has one as well.
Anything else from the board?
So the entry is from a door, or are you descending from the, up to the floor above?
So it's a, the garage, you're gonna walk in through the garage level, which is the driveway level.
Okay.
And then enter through that way.
But there's stairs that go up to the main part of the house.
Correct.
So like a foyer?
Yes, so it's like an entryway right off the garage, like a mudroom-ish area, because that's the main point of entry to the house. Yep.
And, I'll ask the same question that I asked the last one, how, how high are the ceilings down in this basement?
I believe they're close to 8 feet.
Phil?
I don't remember what it is off the top of my head, but it is within, within code.
Okay.
Do the stairs just go up to the garage and then there's another set of stairs go from the garage to the main house?
No, I think that set of stairs goes up to the first floor, right?
Correct, yep, directly into the living space.
Door comes in from the garage at the same level.
Oh, oh, the same height, oh, okay, okay.
And the door that's next to the door in from the garage going back, is that into like the low part of the basement?
Yeah, the first, the first skinny part is full ceiling height.
Gotcha.
But that's access to the storage space, which is the lower ceiling height. So that's gonna be, we're eating up a lot of the basement to put this in here, so that would be the remaining storage for the home.
Once again, I'll give my same speech, I don't see how this is gonna become a two-family home, so I have no problem with it.
I'm good.
I'm gonna go play the lottery tonight, I suggest everyone else do the same. Any questions from the board?
Nothing further.
Anything from the audience? Nope? Okay, I guess we will close.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second it. Guy has speed.
Racing over here.
Don't get him out of his lane.
Jen, who do we have voting on this? James?
Yes.
Okay, is there any further discussion from the board?
I like it.
I make a motion to grant the petition to Crosswoods Contracting, Nick Kucha for property at 87 Coachman's Lane, map 37A, parcel 25, North End of Mass, 01845, in the R1 zoning district. The applicant is requesting a special permit pursuant to the Town and North End of Zoning Bylaws, section 195-4.2Q, for a family suite in the R1 zoning district for the purpose of constructing a family suite within the basement of the existing home. And I'd like to make mention, there's only one plan here.
I do not.
Drawn by Crosswoods Contracting, 15 London Derry Road, London, London Derry, New Hampshire.
Can you name a date?
I'm looking for a date.
Apologize, I don't think I dated it either.
Mm-mm.
Uh-oh.
Mm-mm, that's it.
That's it.
It fails, it's done.
All right, so I think it's.
Don't give me a heart attack like that.
Dates today.
Do you have an idea of month of when it was?
Uh, it's right about the application date, I finished that draft up as I was finishing up the application.
What's the application date?
I'm working on it.
How about September 20th, the day it was submitted?
That would be.
Our best of.
That would be within a couple of days.
Right, I mean, does that work for everybody, September 20th?
Sure.
Are you okay with us dating it?
Absolutely.
Okay.
We can date it.
So there was a submission on this building permit, if that matters, that's July 15.
Okay, I'd like to make a reference of a plan drawn by Crosswoods Contracting, 15 London Derry Road, London Derry, New Hampshire, dated 9/20/22, and there's only one sheet to put into the record, yeah. Am I missing anything?
No, I don't believe so.
That's it?
That's it, okay. Can I have a second?
Well, me, I made the motion.
You got that?
Gotcha.
James?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
I'm an aye.
Aye.
You are all set?
Fantastic, thank you very much.
Have a great night.
Have a great night.
All these people are so opposed to all these family suites, I don't see what the problem is.
I'm really loving the family suites tonight.
No problem with these family suites at all, I'm, I'm all for them.
So that's what I have to do, I have to do better windows if I want a family suite in my basement, huh?
Yeah, you gotta put egress windows in, yes.
That means I'm breaking my concrete, what's the point?
You've got window wells on the outside, you gotta deal with conservation.
We're not gonna talk. I'm zipping it, I'm recorded, okay, up next is 55 Dana Street.
All right, we all set? I like to open the public.
This is a night for it.
What's that?
Still got time.
For a family suite.
Frank, get back up.
So, well, my name's Robert Tyne from.
Oh, hold on one second, we just have to read in the legal notice and then it's all yours.
I'd like to start the, the petition, the petition of Robert P. Tyne for property at 55 Dana Street, map 10, parcel 14, North End of Mass, 01845, in the R2 zoning district. The applicant is requesting a variance pursuant to the Town and North End of Zoning Bylaws, section 195, attachment 3, table 2, summary of the mentioned requirements for one side setback in the R4 zoning district for the purpose of constructing an additional garage bay. Specifically, applicant is requesting a side setback needing a relief variance of 6.3. Side setback proposed is 8 point, is 8 feet 9 inches. Side setback required per table 2 is 15 feet. It's all yours.
Now it's all yours.
My name's Robert Tyne, and the address is 55 Dana Street. Just to give you a little history on the house and what, what's been going on the past year and this year. So my parents had the house built in 1960, and it was built just the way it stands today with the one-stall garage. I guess they told me back then, no one had two cars and most people were lucky to have one. So they said that, you know, they all walked four miles to school and.
I'll tell both of you.
Right, right, yeah, I got that, so. So then in, in 2000, they put my sister and I on the deed and they are lifetime tenants. 2008, my father passed away, so my mother's been there since 1960, living alone since 2008. Two months ago in 90, she turned 97 in August.
Good for her.
Yeah, and still, until about the end of last year, she was still cooking and writing checks, paying her bills. But she had fallen a couple of times, started using a cane, stopped owning a church, which was a miracle. And so, so my sister suggested, you know, she, she has a house in Methuen, I have a house in Haverhill. So my sister suggested, you know, Ma, maybe you should come stay with me for a while, she had just left the hospital. And she's been there ever since, seems to be kind of comfortable there. So, you know, that's, right now, that's the way it stands, so the house has been vacant for all this year. So, the beginning of this year, in February, my wife passed away. So I have a big house in Haverhill. And, you know, so as the days went by and the weeks went by, you know, I'm sitting there looking at this big house and I said, you know, this is crazy, I don't need this, I don't want this. So I looked at the house I grew up in and it's vacant and it's one level, which is nice, I just turned 65 and, you know, I thought, you know, as you get older, I think one level's good. So to come back to the house I grew up in, the town I love, you know, I thought, this is where I belong. So of course I talked to my mother, my sister, they were all for it, no problem, everybody loved the idea. So I called Kevin Murphy from North End of, who would be the contractor, and we've talked and he's gotta make a lot of changes to the house inside, we're not adding any square footage, none of that, just the garage, which I'll get into, but, um. So the only thing is, is, you know, there's a lot of work to be done, he hasn't even, you know, of course, hasn't even started on the inside, but like pink tubs, pink tile.
Oh, come on, I love the 80s look.
80s, 60s.
I'm an 80s baby, I can't go any, I can't go any farther back than that.
Yeah, so, yeah, there's a lot of work to do, but the one thing I told him I couldn't really live with is the one, one-stall garage for a couple of reasons. I have a snow blower, I have a, you know, the usual things you put in a garage, right, a lawnmower. I need room for a baggage barrel and a recycling barrel and I have, when I put my SUV in the garage, it's there now, that's it, you can barely breathe. So, so Steve Foster came up with the plans that you have. And so the next thing I did was obviously talk to the one neighbor who's gonna be affected by, I'm looking for 6 feet 3 inches of the 15 that's required. And so I talked to them and they were kind enough to put, I think you have.
Is that Leslie and Peter?
Yeah, yeah, Kevafoski, yeah, so yeah, so they approved, no problem, they've been there forever, we're all best friends, no problem. I did not talk to any of the other butters. Honestly, when, you know, the, the way it's planned, it's exactly an extension of what's there now. The roof level's the same, it's not higher, it's not lower, it's not front, back. If you've driven by or if you're familiar with Dana Street, or if you have kids, we are right across the street, adjacent to the Little League field, Cal Thomas. And that's probably, even though this might not be the right forum, but that's probably one of the biggest reasons that my sister and I want the garage. Because we don't park in the driveway, we never have when there's a game going on. It's, you know, the fencing isn't, isn't enough and we get, my mother's been collecting like, you know, like I put in the paperwork, they have two dozen baseballs every year. My mother, I'd say, Ma, keep them, I wanna go talk to the town about, you know, adding the fence and, no, no, I don't wanna cause any problems, so she'd go give them to the coaches, you know. But this year, she's not there, so I had a chance to like, you know, I go every day and I, and I've got a bucket of at least 24 baseballs. So in fact, I was going there Sunday, there was a game going on, I didn't really understand the, no North End of a teams, they were, I think they were from Lawrence. And just as I, I parked, we always park, you know, Marblehead Street goes across, we park on the other side of Dana Street up there and walk down when there's a game going on, so I did. So I walk into the driveway and what happens, a lefty batter foul ball, and I could have caught it right in front of my front door. So, yeah, that's, that's the reason, my sister and I both say, you know, you gotta get another garage, so if she comes in, she brings my mother visits, she can pull into the garage.
So you're basically not able to, when you're, when there's games, you're.
Forget it, yeah.
You're not able to.
I mean, we could, but, you know, we have nice cars and, you know, we don't wanna broken window, we don't wanna debt in the car, you know, so.
I don't blame you, because 13-year-olds don't really have money to pay for.
Yeah, yeah, and maybe like, you know, people tell us, well, don't worry about it, the town will pay, if it's a Little League game, I'm sure they, I know they will. But, you know, in the summer, when the kids are out of school, there's, there's big kids playing there and, yeah, you know, they're gonna run.
I can't say I blame them.
Right, right, we all did, so, and we have, you know, we grew up at the, the other Little League field, that one came in like 92, you know, it was just a playground for years. That one came, I think it was built in 92, but I mean, by my, I myself played four years, I was eligible at the original field, I don't know, Mass Ave there. I mean, I, I love seeing the kids play, it's better than video games in the bedroom, I mean, you know, that's, that's not, it's just the, the fence, but. I was talking to them when they played down the, the street, you know, they putting all the hot dog in, and I talked to the DPW, I thought was the right people to talk to, but, um. The engineer said, no, you gotta talk to, forget his name, but anyway, the one that runs the youth center.
Gorman.
Yeah, thank you, yeah, so I said, well, that, that's for another day, and that'll be in the spring maybe, when I, I have to sell my house in the spring, that's the goal, and move there, so.
So now are you planning on using both garages for cars?
Well, in storage, I mean, you know, the lawnmower, the snow blower, what I talked about, yeah, but it'd be, yeah, two cars, definitely, it's gonna have a, you know, a roof.
I only ask because I'm wondering if you're looking at something more like the snow blower and the lawnmower, if we're able to.
Oh.
Make it a little smaller.
Yeah, no, I mean, I always want, like I put, like today, I put them in the middle of the, the two cars I have and there's always room in the middle, that's what I've always done with any of my houses, but. So it's rarely for my sister, I guess, or, or a visitor to pull in, I guess, you know.
Okay.
And it's always just when there's a game, I mean, you know, you go there in the winter, no, I mean, you have to worry about it, but.
Can I ask, Mr. Building Inspector?
Yes, sir.
What is the average width of a garage stall?
Stall itself, you usually have an eight-foot door, right, Mr. Inspector? And you need enough to open the doors on both sides. This is pretty narrow, 12 foot is pretty narrow, yeah, so.
So 12 feet is on the narrow side?
Yeah, definitely.
I think it's one of the other ones.
It's not excessive?
No, not at all, not at all.
It's on the narrow side?
It's definitely on the narrow side, you're gonna have to kind of, if you, you're gonna have to pull one side squeeze out one side, you know what I mean?
Okay, I think that's the, the existing one is that, so he wanted to, he thought we could just match that. Good, and not push more than the 6'3" I'm looking for, you know.
So I, I drove by, you have a nice looking property there, I mean, I had never been down.
Oh, yeah?
On Dana before, so that was.
The older part of town.
I saw some, some new turf there, so you have a nice layout, and here's my, the main question, I, I, to me, it's, seems very logical. But the question I have is, so you have your existing garage and you have the, you know, what, the 15 or so feet and then there's a fence for your neighbor there. I don't see, there, I see the butters list here, there's no butters here. Does your neigh, have you had any, given, has your, has your neighbor know, has there been any feedback?
Big people better.
Yeah, I told, yeah, I mentioned that, yeah, they, they put a letter on. Oh, it is?
Here. That's the direct neighbor.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I spoke to them and.
Okay, very good, thank you.
We talked.
You got it covered.
Yeah.
I guess the only question I have is, so it sounds like this is like a Justin Case garage bay.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, right now, I have two cars, I have my wife's car, it's hard to explain, but I, it's a. It's hard to explain, but I, it's a car she's always wanted, it's a BMW. I haven't even given it up. I can't, I can't sell it. Now, hopefully, I don't need two cars, so hopefully next year I get rid of it, but.
Right.
But right now I do, so if I were to move in, yeah, I guess, yeah, my sister's out of luck.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sympathetic to the idea that you have a bit of a special circumstance there as well, right? Like, you know, in most cases, if your sister needed to visit, and she could just park outside. But that in this particular case, you're kind of always rolling the dice. And that's not a great place to be, right?
Yeah, it's not fair.
And so I, I appreciate that it's not just the normal circumstances where you can always park on the street or in the driveway or something like that.
I drove by the, I think it was Saturday morning.
That's okay.
And I saw the kids playing baseball and I, it's a wonderful thing, the kids playing baseball.
I agree.
Okay, it's a great thing. And I saw the quote, the danger that God in the driveway might have. Okay, I can see the danger. And like my colleague said, this is obviously extenuating circumstances for the protection of the vehicles. I had no problem with this.
Any almanacs? No?
I'm okay with it. I think when I was a kid, I probably hit some balls in that direction too, so, uh.
I mean, foul balls happen, you know, that's why the major leagues had to put, you know, like, two years ago, they put.
When I was playing on the lower field, so I was really way out of bounds with it.
You were a big hitter.
No.
Anyone else? And there's no one in the audience, so.
I make a motion to close the public comment?
I'll second it.
No one else is getting in.
I know, you guys take turns. Any further discussion needed?
Nothing from me.
I mean, I, I, I'll only say that, uh, if the neighbor was vehemently objecting, I would have some pause just because of how close it is, but like, the neighbor's not upset. I can't imagine putting this garage anywhere else that makes sense and.
And I can't imagine dealing with baseballs all the time.
Yeah, I, I, I was thinking about the other windows in the house too, but.
I shouldn't mention.
Nothing we can do about it.
I shouldn't say this, but you should Google golf balls. Recently, there was an issue in one town with golf balls.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
Yes. Yeah, see, you know what I'm talking about. That's all I'm gonna say. Just Google it. Okay, so nothing further?
No.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to grant a variance for Robert P. Tyne for property at fifty-five Dana Street, map ten, parcel fourteen, North End of Mass. Oh, one eight four five in the R four zoning district. To grant, to, to, the applicant is requesting a variance pursuant to town and north end of zoning bylaws. Section one ninety-five, attachment three, table two, summary of dimension requirements for one side setback in the R four zoning district for the purpose of constructing an additional garage bay. Specifically, applicant is requesting a side setback needing a relief variance of six point three. Side setback proposed is eight point nine. Side setback required per table two is fifteen feet. And I'd like to mention of a plan drawn by Sullivan Engineering Group dated nine twelve twenty-two of Dana Street and the proposed, uh, garage bay.
Laura? Uh, wait, no. Michael?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm an aye?
Aye.
Did somebody, yes, aye. Did somebody second?
Oh, sorry, did I skip a step? Okay, can we have a second on that first?
I'll second it.
Okay. Michael?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm an aye?
Aye.
Aye.
You're all set?
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
You really moved these along.
And my condolences.
Thank you, Mike. Our original chairman just heard that.
Did that all happen within an hour and a half, huh?
Yes, I know. You don't need to pat me on the back too much for that.
Do we need a, I make a motion to close the meeting?
Uh, no, 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 no.
No?
We are not done yet. Don't jump. We're not worrying about that tonight. Don't worry, I thought about that. Uh, we need to accept the twenty twenty-three meeting schedule.
Yes.
Has everybody looked at it? There is the, there's no meeting in July.
I saw that.
Right, we knew of the meeting.
Yeah, except for that was based off of old chairman's requests in the past. That was not our prior one, but a one prior to, uh, July meeting.
Was that in the package?
It was in the package. Would you like to see my copy?
Yeah, there was.
We can keep it as no July meeting, that's fine.
We don't tend to get a lot in the summer anyway.
Do you need a copy?
Is there ever any hardship?
No, I mean.
Like by not having it?
No, because at the end of the day, they have to have their stuff, they have to have their stuff in June or have their stuff in August.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure.
We put these, I mean, put it this way, we're approving this now and we're in October.
Yes.
If you really need something done.
You get it done.
Get it done.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's basically how it works. It might be.
I mean, you don't have any, any people coming to the August being, being like, I wish I could have done this in July, no.
The people from the June meeting might get a little upset because they're being pushed to July, to August, but again, it comes down to you're kind of new, so you should have gotten your ducks in a row and given yourself four meetings if you're gonna do something that's somewhat contentious. Condentious. Um, anybody have any issues? So can I have a motion to accept the twenty twenty-three?
No, I've been making motions one night, someone else will.
So moved.
No, someone needs to make a motion.
I, I move that we accept the proposed meeting schedule for twenty twenty-three.
Am I okay to do this without Ron here? Ron?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't stepping on toes. This is more of a, of normal chairman thing.
Well, you're, you're a normal chairman now and.
Do not get used to this.
Go ahead. I was hoping I would see there today so I could do it, but, um, so please go ahead and do it and we'll lock it in next year.
Okay. Um, okay, can I have a, you need to vote on it? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The twenty twenty-three meeting schedule is accepted and.
Yeah.
Now I think I am done, so now I will take a motion to close the meeting.
I move that we close the meeting.
Can I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Bye, Ron.
That would be like an hour and a half for five, I have, that's incredible.
Do not get used to this.
Yeah, absolutely. You, you now take your job. I've been, always the same stuff. Thank you.
I know where you live.
And people yelling at us being too, too strict.
Good night, Ron.
Good night.